They're the oldest form of democracy in Canadian history. In fact, they predate Canada itself. But some provinces have eliminated school boards altogether. Manitoba is trying to do that right now, in fact, prompting the question of whether we should do likewise in Ontario. Let's debate that tonight. Joining us now in Kingston, Ontario, Laurie French. She is a trustee for the Limestone District School Board representing Greater Napanee. She's also president of the Canadian School Boards Association. In Georgetown, Ontario, John Snoblen, former progressive conservative minister of education, now a strategy consultant with MK&amp;A. And in Pickering, Ontario, Sachin Maharaj, lecturer in educational leadership and policy at OISI, the Ontario Institute for Studies in Education. And it's great to have you three with us on the agenda tonight in our kind of new-fangled setup now that we've all been sent home. We really appreciate you folks sparing some time for us tonight. Laurie, get us started here. Just tell us, in essence, what's the job of an Ontario school trustee?
Well, democratic representation is a core value in Canada, and school boards are a part of that. And trustees, as you noted, have been in place since before the country was established and other forms of government to ensure that local communities are providing for the education of children. And so that continues. And while we've evolved over the decades since then, of course, as we should and the systems modernized, the role of the trustee has not diminished. And the need for that local voice and local contact is critical. School board trustees really are the eyes and the ears of the community, I would say. And most of the tasks and responsibilities, as outlined in legislation, that are quite unique to the role of trustee, focus on accountability, focus on setting the budget, setting local policy, ensuring that the multi-year strategic plans are producing the results. We employ the director of education and really just connect with the community and our constituents. And now presently in Ontario, we are the bargaining agent on behalf of school boards through the provincial association for thousands of educational staff and administrators.
Okay, that sounds like a very... Sounds like an exhaustive list of responsibilities. How many hours a week? Give me a ballpark, do you think, your work?
Well, my role's a little bit different at the national level and formerly at the provincial level. But I would say this is 20 to 30 hours a week, at least, in serving constituents and serving on those different board tables.
And how much do you get paid for that?
Well, trustees in Ontario are paid anywhere from around $5,000 a year to maybe $25,000 plus in larger boards. It's based on enrollment, which is unique to any other elected role. And that is a stipend, that is not a salary with benefits. And so you can see that this is not a lucrative role. This is because we are dedicated. This is community service, and we care about our schools.
Okay, John Snoblen, come on in here and tell us how you would describe the value of school board trustees to the education system today.
Well, we've got a lot of really good trustees out around the province. I've met a lot of them. But I can tell you that in my experience, form should follow function. The function of school boards has changed dramatically over the last 25 years, over the last 50 years. And we haven't seen any change in the form. So I really think that we need to have another look at how we govern education, how we deliver education, and how we can put the voice of local parents into the system in a better way than the school board trustee system as it currently exists.
Let's do a little walk down memory lane here, because of course you were the minister of education when the Mike Harris government was in power. And you did, you broke a lot of eggs, let's put it that way. You wanted to change things quite significantly, cut the number of school board trustees, slash the pay to what it is now, much smaller than it was before, take away their taxing powers in many cases. The school board folks didn't like any of that very much. Why did you feel the need to do it?
Well, let's look at the taxing powers. You know, we had a very, a very quiet, sensible mayor in Mrs. Saga, near where I live. At the time, she told me that trustees could set a budget, but they didn't have to go to get the money from the people, you know. And it seemed wrong to her, and to me too, that you have a level of government spending money but not having to collect it. So we thought it was the smart thing to do to have the province pay for an essential service like education so that local community standards or local community wealth didn't have much to do with the quality of the school or quality of education. So school boards no longer have to, school board trustees no longer have to set those kinds of global budgets. The government obviously needed to take over the central negotiating table with, you know, where we spend 80% of our budget on teachers and teacher supports. So there were dramatic changes in how that happened. We also had one entity, the province, during curriculum instead of 170-odd curriculum boards across the province. I think those are all obvious things. They all make a lot of sense, and we did those back in '95, '96, '97.
Sachin Maharaj, let me bring you in here to ask a bit of an overarching question, which is if the provincial government has a particular vision for how they would like to reform education in the province of Ontario, as John Snoblen's government did 25-plus years ago, how helpful or not can trustees be in that effort?
Well, as Laurie mentioned, I mean, trustees come from the local communities that they serve. And so in a province as large as Ontario, with, you know, close to 5,000 schools and huge geographic differences, although you might have, you know, curriculum and other education policy emanating from Queen's Park in Toronto, how to effectively implement that across the province is going to look different. And I think having elected school board trustees from those communities can help sort of tailor the education policy to the different needs across the province. And so without that local voice and representation, I think you're going to run into some issues about how schools should effectively serve communities across Ontario.
Let me do a, let's do a simple voice vote here. Laurie, on the issue of whether we should get rid of trustees across the province of Ontario, you vote how?
Definitely, we would need to keep school board trustees, absolutely.
John Snoblen, if you were put to a vote in the legislature today, yea or nay on school board trustees, how would you vote?
Nay, I think we need to reorganize this. I think we need to get closer to parents, not further away from them.
Sachin, you get to break the tie. How would you vote?
I would not vote to get rid of elected school board trustees. And I think if you look in other provinces that have done that recently, whether it's New Brunswick or PEI, there've kind of been moves to sort of bring them back in some form. So I don't think that would be a good idea.
Well, let's find out what Konrad Jakubuski of the Globe and Mail thinks about this, because a few years ago, he wrote a column about this in which he was not at all on the fence. Let's bring up this quote here. "The truth is," he wrote, "that most school boards offer a sorry spectacle of Canadian democracy in action. They cannot even govern themselves, much less look out for students in their charge. They are plagued by petty ideological battles, personality conflicts, incivility, and sheer incompetence. You need adult supervision. The number of cases of provincial education ministers being forced to intervene directly in the management of dysfunctional school boards, even firing entire slates of trustees, keeps growing. From Halifax to Vancouver, this pathetic pattern keeps repeating itself, yet provincial governments never seem to learn the lessons of these fiascos." All right, we've got to get some response to this. Laurie, obviously, you know, he's not wrong about some of what he says there. There have been numerous instances where school boards have shown themselves completely dysfunctional, and the province needs to come in and take a look at things. Can you categorically say he's wrong about what he's written?
Well, Steve, unfortunately, there are, there are bad examples of governors at all levels of government. That's not a reason to eliminate representative voice in any way. With respect to school board trustees in particular, that is the work of, of school boards to continue to develop and evolve and represent their communities. But, but acting with integrity is something that we do. And proportionately speaking, this is not the majority of school boards. I would say that, you know, those examples are examples that absolutely need to be addressed, but are not a reason to eliminate democracy.
John Snoblen, do you think he's taking the exception and making it the rule? And in that case, it's not really a fair point to make?
Well, school boards are different across the province. You know, you see rural school boards work a little differently than urban ones do. And, and some of them seem perpetually in disorder at best, you know, to be polite about it. But that's not all of them. The real problem here, I think, is that we need innovation in education. There's some significant things we could do to improve the educational materials that are available in our classroom, the delivery of curriculum. And school boards, in my experience, are never the folks who do innovation. They actually kind of act as a sort of a governor on innovation in the system. And that's one of the reasons why I think they've kind of outgrown their usefulness.
Sachin, is that a fair comment?
Well, I think when we have criticisms of school boards, we need to make a distinction here. So there's school boards in the sense of the administrative units that, you know, hire the teachers and run the schools. And then there's the elected school board of trustees that oversees all of that. And I think when we talk about dysfunctional school boards, there are examples of that. You know, in many of those instances, that had to do with, you know, the administration, whether it was directors of education and so on. And that's kind of a separate issue from the boards of elected trustees. And I think one of the criticisms that we've seen in recent years is we've had examples of some dysfunction, particularly, say, in the Toronto Board or some of the GTA school boards. And because that's where a lot of our media is based, that's used to often generalize to school boards across the entire province, where that may not necessarily be the case. So I don't think it's a fair criticism to say, you know, school boards across Ontario are somehow dysfunctional.
No, fair enough. But Laurie, you know, I well remember the story at the Toronto District School Board for a while. They had to bring in an outsider to do an independent study. I mean, it was a bloody soap opera there. How damaging are instances like that to perhaps the broader cause which you would like to promote?
Well, those are examples where, you know, work needs to be done, and, and we need to strengthen the governance role in that situation. You know, we can't, we can't dispute that those situations didn't exist. The point is that we, that is the opportunity to continue to advance. And to the points that were made earlier about innovation, school boards enable that to happen by responding to local communities and the uniquenesses. One size does not fit all from a, from a curriculum or a governance perspective. And, and really, to be able to understand what's happening in individual communities, that's where we can tailor it and find those moments of innovation, allowing our teachers to fly and to, to bring that to the classroom. That's where innovation happens. And creating the conditions for that is what school boards do, through funding, through budgets, strategic planning, and setting policy. And, and that is our role. And, and to diminish that or minimize that or centralize it has great risk for communities.
Well, all right, let me come at this a different way. And John Snoblen, I'll get you first on this one. We vote for our school board trustees during municipal elections. So it's basically every four years. And, you know, we have empirically provable facts to look at that show that many, many people who go to the polls don't bother to tick the box for school board trustee. Many school board trustees, in addition, also run uncontested. I think it's also fair to say many, many electors don't even know who their school board trustee is. In your view, should that make us question the legitimacy of the democratic legitimacy of school boards?
Well, it's, I mean, most, yeah, most people couldn't pick their, their school board trustee out of a police lineup. You know, that's just the way it is. If you want to talk about accountability, you know, if you had the local directors of education reporting to a deputy minister, reporting to a minister responsible for the legislature, there's a lot of media attention. There's the kind of structure for accountability that works. That's not present in our current school board system.
Sachin, do we have a bit of a democratic deficit when it comes to school board trustees?
I mean, maybe, but I think a similar point could be made with municipal politics more generally. Like, how many people know their local city councillor or regional councillor or whatever it is? And in many of those cases, turnout is low and people are sort of reelected. I mean, look at, in the Toronto City Council, city councillors are reelected, you know, perpetually. And so I think you see some of the same issues. I think part of that has to do with the nature of school, school boards themselves. Part of that has to do with the lack of political parties at the municipal level. You know, in places like DC, where there are political parties, school board members kind of can run on a slate, and there can be a platform, and there could be more awareness in that regard. So, yeah, I mean, there is some of an issue there, but I don't think there's reason to get rid of elected school board trustees on that basis any more than there would be to get rid of, you know, local city councillors.
Okay, with Laurie, do you think that school board trustees have a democratic legitimacy problem, given how few people vote for them or apparently are interested in what they do?
Well, I wouldn't say they're not interested in what we do. I can tell you when there's a concern or a question that would never be answered directly from a minister's office, they find their local trustees. So whether they know them actively on a day-to-day basis is a very different thing. And not exercising your right to vote is no reason to remove the right to vote for that representative. I think, you know, one of the things that we have to remember is that school boards, in recent research, have actually been proven to be much more diverse than, than most levels of government. And, and that's a critical thing in the current environment. So more than half are women, and many more are proportionately black, indigenous, or people of color. And this, this really is something that we need to think about across all democratic levels. And, and so I think that, that strengthens the role and, and the ability to be present in the community and know our communities very much, to be able to serve them.
Well, having said that, John, many provinces, including Quebec and Nova Scotia, Prince Edward Island, and now Manitoba, which is in the midst of this, they've got a bill before the legislature right now to, to try to eliminate school boards. They are doing it. They either have done it or are in the process of doing it. What do you think that says about school boards across the country?
I think Ontario's 20 years later than this. I think we needed to move to a different model when we moved education onto the, out of the property tax and onto the balance sheet of the province of Ontario. I think there's accountability to taxpayers. That happens in Queen's Park. There's the administration of the system. That happens inside of the ministry and, and should go out to districts. But the representation of parents and the interest of parents and students, there's a very direct connection there. That needs to be done differently than it is now. And I think much more locally.
When you were the minister of education 25 years ago, did you have a plan to get rid of school boards?
You know, 25 years ago, unlike now, I could support everything that the government did, which happens when you sit in executive council. I thought that the time that, that that structure had, had, had outlasted, you know, its, its usefulness. I didn't think that school boards drove innovation then. I don't think they do now. I, I thought there was a better way of linking up parent councils, giving them more authority, having parents have a different window into the classroom and to the, what's happening with their children. That's the most intense relationship inside of the system. But I thought we could administer it better, more efficiently. For instance, we might know why it is that our maintenance costs on schools that are closed is exactly the same as our maintenance costs on schools that are open. That makes no sense to me. And so the more accountability we can have at 900 Bay in the ministry, I think, the better.
Okay, but did you, did you actually bring a specific plan to Premier Harris to eliminate school boards when you were the minister?
That was something that we considered. And the choice at that time was, you know, we were doing a lot of change all at once. And the thought process at that time was, you know, we have to, we have to kind of work within the structures of how much change we can drive at one time, just so the system can, can respond properly. And so the school boards were reduced in number. You know, we made changes in some trustee roles, but we did not at that time address the overall governance structure. Again, I think we're 20 years late on this question.
Sachin, can you give us some understanding of the experience in other provinces that have eliminated school boards? Has it worked to achieve the goals that the governments that eliminated those school boards wanted to achieve?
Well, I mean, there's the stated goals, and then I think there's kind of some of the, the real goals. And in a lot of provinces where they've gotten rid of school boards, I think part of the reason that they've done that is because school boards are often viewed by the government in power sometimes as impediments to the implementation of their educational policy vision, right? And you can see that, you know, even here in Ontario, a few years ago, the Ford government, when they were revising the physical education sex ed curriculum, you know, boards like Toronto basically said, "We're not going to do it," right? And so, and because they're another body of elected representation, they can often be in tension with the government in power. And by getting rid of elected school boards, the province is more able to implement their policy. Now, they don't say that necessarily when they're getting rid of the school boards. Like in Nova Scotia's example, they said, "We want to get rid of elected school boards to make things less bureaucratic and make schools more responsive to local communities." What has ended up happening in that province is the school system hasn't become any less bureaucratic. There are the same numbers of layers of administration across the province. What's happened is there just now, everything's more centralized in the hands of the province. And even though the idea was that there'd be these enhanced parent councils, that hasn't really happened. And also, it's important to note that if you put everything in the hands of local parent councils, then all the citizens in the, in each municipality that aren't parents or that don't have kids currently in the system are effectively shut out in having input to the way schools are run. And so I think these are important things we need to consider if we were thinking about doing something similar in Ontario.
Laurie, let me get your sense of this as well, because of course you don't just represent your part of Ontario that you represent as trustee, but you're the president of the School Boards Association across the whole country. So let me, let me come at it this way. The work that trustees used to do, who does that work if you eliminate the elected school board trustee?
I don't know, and, and that's the risk, really. What we've seen in provinces, as Sachin says, you know, there is a, there is a need for us to really make sure that that structure's in place. There is no evidence that I have seen that the proposed models will achieve what they profess to or that in provinces that have proceeded with that, that those things have come to fruition and replaced the ability for communities to have voice. In Nova Scotia in particular, many of the minority voices that had direct representation at the table, the Mi'kmaq, Indigenous peoples, and Black African Nova Scotians, those designated roles in decision-making and policy-setting are gone. Similarly, in Quebec, where minority language holder, parents and trustees and citizens who had that structure, the English minority language boards that remain are limited to parents, as Sachin says. And, you know, that, that is, is really a challenge as far as limiting who can run. How democratic is that? It's very concerning. What we would rather do is focus on those models where it works. I think there's some good examples in Ontario, despite some of the comments that have been made. But I would also look to BC. There, the Minister of Education has a co-governance agreement with the school board associations to document how they will collaborate and co-govern. And some outstanding work has been done. That doesn't diminish the role to have advocacy in a strategic way and speak out on behalf of communities, but it allows for the consultation to occur and to, you know, I mean, I can understand how central governments would appreciate not having all of those local tables to, to need to consult with and, and to consider when they're making their decisions. But that's essentially why they've existed and why they need to continue to exist.
All right, let me follow up with John Snoblen on that. If, if you were to eliminate school boards in the province of Ontario, who would do the work that trustees are now doing under that scenario?
Well, look, I think that this is not about efficiency. It's about effectiveness. What you want is accountability when you're producing something as important as education that uses up the kind of resources that, that education uses. And is that important? I think accountability comes when there's public attention. I think that happens mostly at the provincial level. And I think there are an awful lot of things that happen in the education system that, you know, like outdoor maintenance, indoor maintenance, the, the day-to-day functioning of a school that really don't require, you know, an elected school board trustees. I don't think that there's much that happens, frankly, at the trustee level right now that's beneficial to education that couldn't happen if we reexamine the way we do parent councils and put parents closer to the decision-making.
Well, the theory is, though, John, that, that the trustee is an elected person that if a parent has a problem with something going on in their school, or frankly, even system-wide, they have a point person that they can call and complain to. If that trustee doesn't exist, who assumes that role?
I think that, first of all, schools should be designed to be more responsive, not through a trustee system, but through the local director of education and the staff there. You know, I don't know, as serving as an MPP, I got a lot of school questions where they weren't resolved at the level of the, of the school board trustee. And I know that most MPPs will tell you they have a long case file of people who have an issue with the local school or with their child in the school system. Giving, giving those MPPs a way to actually make a difference would, I think, effectively speed up things.
Sachin, can I get you to comment on that? I mean, the fact of the matter is, over the last 25 years, a great deal of the authority that school board trustees once had has been taken away and has been frankly uploaded to the provincial government. Would we really miss their disappearance if they in fact disappeared?
Well, when we look at what we expect of school boards, right? I mean, to your question, things like taxation powers have been taken away and curriculum has been centralized. But we actually expect a lot more of school boards these days than we did a few decades ago. I mean, a few decades ago, school boards were primarily tasked with hiring teachers and making sure there were school buildings and textbooks. Now they're tasked with ensuring high levels of student achievement, well-being, equity and inclusion, preventing bullying, operating childcare centers, buses, you know, networks of school buses, continuing education. And all of that is something that needs to be done at the, at the local level. And so, given the greater expectations that we placed on our school system, I think there's still, is this need to sort of tailor things to the different communities across Ontario.
And Sachin, let me follow up with this. The Manitoba government currently says that if they are able to get their bill through their legislature and eliminate school boards, they figure it'll save $50 million a year. Does that matter?
I mean, yeah, saving, you know, making sure money is spent effectively does matter. But if we look at, again, the, the role of school board trustees here in Ontario, as Laurie mentioned, they're basically not paid anything. I mean, you know, a base stipend of $5,000. My own research has shown that trustees put in about an average of over 20 hours a week in the role while most are working other full-time jobs. And so this isn't some sort of lucrative position that they occupy. And most of the money we spend in the education system is in the administration and teacher salaries and things like that. So just getting rid of the elected school board aspect of it, I don't think will save much money at all.
John Snoblen, let me, let me ask you the political question, which is, you know, if your government, which I think it's fair to say was known as being a government that was prepared to break some eggs along the way, if your government didn't feel that it had the political currency to do this change, can you imagine any other government in Ontario being prepared to do this?
No, I can't. I just think that it's, although many may want to and may see the logic in doing it that way, there's a huge noise factor here from a small number of people. And you'd have to have something that was much better right out of the box in order to get the public will. And it would take a, a very big campaign to get that done. I think it could happen. I mean, I think it's, but I don't think governments have the energy for it, and it's not high on their priority list.
Laurie, can I get you on that?
Well, I, I don't believe that there would be support for this in, in our province. While, you know, there, there will be mixed opinions on any topic. As Sachin said, you know, this is, this is less than half a percent of a school board budget. So this is not a cost savings. And for communities to lose access to someone in their community who knows what's happening, who can get them answers, and who, and who speaks to what they need, is incredibly valuable. And while I think there's always work for trustees to be sure that people in their community know who they are, what they do, and how they serve them, that, that's an ongoing piece of work, for sure. But strengthening the role at a time in society when we have so much work to do, why would we not strengthen all of us who are willing to, to provide that community service and make the system better?
Well, Sachin, humor me with this hypothetical question here. I think all of us well remember 35 years ago, the protests in the streets when the Davis government announced it wanted to extend full public funding to the Catholic school system. We well remember 25 years ago when John Snoblen was making changes to the education system, and there were hundreds of thousands of people in the streets protesting against that. You only have to go back a couple of years to see that some of the changes that the Doug Ford government wanted to bring in, brought people out to the legislature by the tens of thousands to protest against those. If any government made a move to eliminate... those. If any government made a move to eliminate trustees in Ontario, do you think that would bring people out of their homes and protesting in the streets? In other words, is this a big enough deal that people would get off the couch and care about it?
I think so. I mean, I think if it was brought forward, this is something where you would see local communities push back. I mean, you've seen that in some of the other provinces where this has been happened as well. And as I mentioned, in places like Nova Scotia, oh, no, sorry, New Brunswick and PEI, eventually the pushback was so great that the governments kind of, sort of reinstated school boards on some level, or at least pledged to in the, in the case of PEI. And so I, I think most people in general are relatively happy with the way their, their school boards and school districts function. And so I don't think there's huge will amongst large members of the public to see such a substantial reorganization, at least not anytime soon.
John Snoblan, last question to you. Do you regret that you didn't get it through 25 years ago?
Yeah, I do. You know, I'd argue that, that most people have not a clue how school boards function, or, or who their school board trustee is. I think there's lots of ways to improve it. It's just not there on the provincial priority list now, and likely won't be anywhere in the, in the future. I think when we were doing all of those innovations 25 years ago, we probably should have looked harder at this.
I suspect you looked, you looked plenty hard at it. I suspect you couldn't get it through the guy at the top of the, the food chain back then. Am I right about that?
Everybody has suspicions about those sorts of things.
And I guess they will continue to linger. I want to thank Laurie French, who is the trustee for the Limestone District School Board, representing Greater Napanee, John Snoblan, the former Minister of Education, Sachin Maharaj from the Ontario Institute for Studies in Education. It's good of all three of you to join us on TVO tonight. Many thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.